October meeting of the East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees. Ms. Beriantos, would you call the role, please?
Yes, Sir Del Brazil.
Present.
Michael Feller.
Present.
Victor Garza.
Here.
James Moki.
John Massengo.
Here.
Mr. Bryant, we have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, the Prayer and the Pledge. Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir trustees, we have representatives from Heritage Middle School today. I'd like to call their principal, Ms. Gomez, to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Toscano. Mr. Bryant and trustees, we have a very special treat for you and everyone tonight. We are going to begin this evening, though, with two of our amazing students. Emma Trogget, if you'd come on, come on up, who will lead us in prayer, and Audrey Trogget, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag and to the Texas Flag.
Dear Lord, thank you for blessing us with this community of people who care so much about the faculty and students. I am blessed to be a part of East Central. Thank you for allowing our schools to feel like a safe place to be. Please continue to guide us through this school year. In your name we pray, amen.
Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A pledge of allegiance to the Texas flag. One state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. So tonight, I want to take this opportunity to recognize both students and parents that place others before self. Each one of these individuals have spent countless hours making Heritage Middle School a better place to be for our students, our faculty, our parents, and our community. I am truly proud of their dedication and service, and I am honored and blessed to work alongside these exceptional people. So first, I want to recognize several of our students who spent countless hours during their summer vacation, cleaning and painting our restrooms so that our students could be inspired for the first day of school. Different inspirational messages were painted on each of the restroom walls and doors leading into the hallways. Students, when I call your name, please make your way to the front to accept a small token of our appreciation for your service to Heritage Middle School. Nadia Ortiz.
Do you want them all to stay up here?
Yes, want them all to stay up here.
Okay. One big picture or individual?
Individuals would be great, yeah. She could just stand over there by Mrs. Zott's. Audrey Trogget. Emma Trogget. Megan Richardson. Bridget Scott. Elise Green. Dorian Holloway. And Annalise Schultz. Will the parents of these exceptional students please stand and be recognized? Thank you, kiddos. So these are just a few pictures of the work that they were doing. Of course, they had to clean it first. So we also have several parents and a grandmother to come out and help as well. So, parents, when I call your name, please make your way to the front to accept a small token of our appreciation for your service to HMS. Kristi Mayorga Holloway.
Yes.
And she's not here, but she's grandma. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Ms. Green, you want to take a quick picture? Will you all take a picture, all of you, with Mr. Toscano and Mr. Garza? And these are just some of the pictures of the final products in our restrooms and hallways. So, thank you, ladies, for your help. We also have some exceptional adults that spend countless hours helping us and volunteering at Heritage for a variety of reasons, and I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to recognize each of them for their generosity. As I call your name, please make your way to the front to accept a small token of our appreciation. Alex Platts. Platts, I apologize, Alex Platts. So Alex is an EC grad, and for the last five years, four years, he has volunteered at Heritage Middle School in our library, helping to return books to the shelves and helping our students find books as well. And so spends Tuesdays and Thursdays with us, four to six hours, so does a fantastic job, and so we wanted to thank you, Alex, for all your hard work. Patricia Johnson. So I think her daughter is playing volleyball, last match of the season, so she is not here, but Ms. Johnson was our PTA president last year, and so she's done a whole bunch of things for us, and I apologize, I can't multitask over here, but that's a picture of Alex. And this is Patricia. And the one thing I wanted to say about Patricia was she started the Bad Moms of a Heritage Hurricane Movement, so. Ginger Friesenhahn. So as a member of the PTA Executive Board, Mrs. Friesenhahn has helped organize the 5K Health Fair, which, which has been a huge success in helping us make connections with our community. Charles Friesenhahn, also known as Scooter. Speaking of our 5K Health Fair, twenty-one years ago, Scooter was an eighth grader at Heritage Middle School. He built the amazing time capsule that withstood the test of time and Mother Nature. All of the items that were packed in the time capsule were in pristine condition. I know that this happened because of his commitment to excellent, excellence. He was taught the value of, if it's worth doing, then it's worth doing right. So, thank you, Scooter. Jennifer Tovar. Mrs. Tovar actually helped with all of the different displays that we have of all of the items from the time capsule. So if you wouldn't mind spending a few minutes, when we are done, walking around, there are on the different tripods, and there's some on the shelves, but she did a fantastic job displaying all of the contents, so then that way we can display it at Heritage for our community to come and see. Melody Chavez.
[applause]
So Mrs. Chavez has served on the SBDM Committee for the last three years as our parent rep, and she provides us with great insight into the impact that our decisions have on our students and our families. I'm falling behind. There's Ms. Chavez and her family. She's also known as Brody and Sophia's mom.
And this is Mr. Chavez.
Two years ago at Heritage, we started a watchdog program, which helps encourage dads, granddads, uncles, brothers to volunteer in our schools as much as they are able to, and Mr. Chavez is known as the top dog.
[laughter]
Yeah. Mr. Michael Trogget. Mr. Trogget mainly works behind the scenes to help Mrs. Trogget's dreams become a reality. Last year, he donated his time and equipment during our anti-bullying rally. This year, he donated our four Safer EC banner, and last week, built the large container for our latest PTA teddy bear drive. And I know everyone probably forgot, I thought I forgot about her, since her name was on the, one of the previous slides, but Robin Trogget, last but certainly not least. And Robin, you need to stay, because I have a lot to say about you. There isn't enough time to tell everyone here all of the great things that Mrs. Trogget does for HMS. First, the word mediocre is not in her vocabulary. She personally put together the gift for all of the school board members.
Thank you.
I will not take credit. All I have to do is ask, what are your thoughts? And there it is, okay? And there it is. That's a great example. We currently have a teddy bear drive going on at Heritage, to be able to distribute them to needy families in the EC community. Her idea. She helped to coordinate our participation in the EC Homecoming Parade, this year, last year. At last year's Homecoming Parade, she decorated the ATV, which helped us win the EC Spirit Award. We currently have one hundred and seventy-nine members in our PTA, more than any other school in EC.
[applause]
Just saying. Her goal for our PTAs to win every single award that the Texas PTA Council gives out. This week, she coordinated the recognition of our child nutrition workers during National School Lunch Week. Every month, a faculty member and a student are chosen from the PTA members to be recognized for their participation. Last month, she recognized our custodial staff, and you'll see the picture there, by providing each of them a personalized T-shirt. She did the same thing for each of us on the PTA Executive Board. At the beginning of last school year, she doesn't probably, she probably doesn't know this, Robin approached me again about the possibilities of starting a cheer club. I didn't tell her what I really wanted to tell her, but my original response, but I, what I did say was, let's give it a try, and I don't regret it at all. Our cheer club helps to promote not only pride and school spirit, but also the value of teamwork. She is the epitome of service. Robin, thank you for all that you do. You not only continue to amaze me by your stamina, your enthusiasm, and creativity, but I continue to learn the importance of the phrase, that it takes a village to raise our kids. You are truly a superwoman. Will the families of all of these wonderful parents please stand and be recognized? So we are proud and privileged to have such a great heritage of exceptional students and parents that continue to leave their legacy on the EC community. Thank you.
Tonight is a night of lots of recognition, and we are super proud tonight to also be recognizing our, some of our district employees who were nominated through our employee recognition program for the month of October. And so first, I'd like to call up Francisco Ramirez, who is a technology department employee, and he's assigned to Tradition. He's... Francisco is being recognized for customer service, and he was nominated by not only Dr. Dykstra, but the entire technology department. During the very hectic two weeks before Tradition opened, Mr. Ramirez spent two weekends and many late nights alongside the Tradition teachers, getting everyone ready for the first day of school, tech-wise. He always has a smile on his face, he never complains, and always finds a solution. He is the embodiment of our core value, customer service. So, Mr. Ramirez, thank you. If you, if there are any friends and family of Mr. Ramirez here tonight with him, please stand and be recognized.
He wanted everyone to know he dressed himself.
Next, we've got our warehouse staff, and I'd like to call up Mr. Pete Serrano. Come on down, Pete. William Coburn and Becky Telemontes, who I believe are actually, also work as custodians at night to serve the district, so they could not be here tonight, but we do have Pete here, and he is being recognized, or that team, the warehouse team, they're being recognized for adaptability, and they were nominated by Margaret Zott's. The warehouse staff had a very, very busy summer this summer, working extended days and most weekends to complete all the moves necessary to start school, and no matter the request, this team jumped into action with a great attitude despite being pulled in many different directions. Aside from their normal, everyday job of getting the pony to and from all the campuses with all of our stuff that we need to pass along, they also had major moves from John Glen to Tradition, then at Sinclair, Oak Crest, Salado, Harmony, Pecan Valley, and the high school. So between the three staff members, and they worked an additional ninety-seven hours of overtime in the sweltering heat to complete those moves. This, this team was adaptable and exceeded all expectations to get the jobs done, and we appreciate y'all very much. But we're all friends and family of, of our warehouse team. Next, I am really proud to call up the art department from the East Central High School. Ms. Hereholzer, Mr. McMeans, Ms. Dobler, Ms. Koontz, and Ms. Townsend, who I think Ms. Townsend had a class tonight at the McNay and couldn't be here. And they're being recognized tonight for teamwork and collaboration, and they were nominated by Mr. Shane McKay. This group of exceptional educators are the epitome of teamwork and collaboration. Because of their effective teamwork and collaboration, our students are afforded multiple opportunities to display their artwork across the great state of Texas and the nation. Our art students are able to participate in multiple events across the city of San Antonio to include the annual Chalk It Up Downtown, regional vase competitions, mural designs, and to participate in activities at the San Antonio Art Museum. Moreover, these art teachers collaborate with other departments across the campus and district, affording our young artists to be able to partner with the Writers Guild at the high school to produce amazing artwork for the poetry slam, and setting them up to work with athletics to produce extraordinary crash posters for homecoming. Ms. Hereholzer, Mr. McMeans, Ms. Dobler, Ms. Koontz, and Ms. Townsend are an inspiration. They are exemplars of effective teamwork and collaboration and deserve all the recognition for the impact and difference they make in the lives of our students. Those were Mr. McKay's words, but I absolutely believe them. They're the truth. Y'all have any friends and family? Any friends and family of this awesome group? Didn't bring anybody. Next, we'd like to bring up our maintenance grounds team, Ernest Ramirez, Keith Moore, George Longoria, Roy Ramirez, and Russell Carver. If you guys will come up. Ernest Ramos.
Ramos.
Ramos. Did I say it? Okay. I'm sorry, Ernest Ramos, Keith Moore.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. But it says Ramos, it says Ramos, I'm sorry. They are being recognized for teamwork and were nominated by Chief Dranowski, and in the early morning hours of September 5th, a tree fell across Sulfur Springs Road due to a storm in the area, causing a safety hazard and traffic delays. With public works hours away, and Chief knowing that we had a community of people, staff, students that needed to get to work, and also our community members' parents that needed to, to get to work, kids and teachers that needed to get to school, he knew that we needed to do something about that tree, because traffic was stacking up quickly. So he made a phone call, and the grounds crew was there without hesitation, very quickly, and in less than five minutes, they, with all of their chainsaws, had that tree cut up and all the debris out of the roadway, so that everyone could get to school and work. And we thank you for your teamwork, gentlemen, and we appreciate you very much. Any friends and family of this team here? Thank you. That concludes our recognitions. Thank y'all very much.
That was, that was quite impressive. Had some great kids here tonight, and we had some exceptional staff, and we appreciate everybody coming out for the awards, and, you know, we always say we're a family, and I think tonight, with our awards, you've seen that in spades. It's just great to be in the school district and to have these students and the staff be able to support our community. So thank you very much for everything that you do. We appreciate it.
We're going to take a ten-minute recess now, and let all of you who need to go home and do homework, or great homework, leave, and then we'll finish up with our business. You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like to, but we're in recess for ten minutes. Thank you. So I took a sneak peek, and we have no one signed up for comments. So we'll move right into superintendent's reports. First report is a personnel report.
Trustees, this month's report is on page ten. It has very little activity. Would like to point out that of the activity there, we had a, a teacher who had a child. She's a military wife and decided to stay home with her firstborn, and fortunately, we were able to solve that problem with existing staff by reorganizing, and another employee who was afforded an opportunity to be moved into an assistant principal position from a teaching position with us to an assistant principalship in another district. That position, we were able to fill from within as well. And if you have any other questions or need any additional information regarding this month's personnel report, be happy to provide that to you.
Right. Item B, department goals.
Trustees, you'll see department goals in your packet for personnel, technology, child nutrition, transportation, health services, custodial, maintenance, and grounds, as well as the East Central Police Department. All of those goals reflect a focus on creating an exceptional learning environment through performance, culture, climate, fiscal responsibility. Every goal you'll see in there today are specific, they are measurable, they are attainable, and they are time-bound. This group will be presenting their mid-year goal updates, as they do annually, on February 28th, to the district leadership team, and they'll come to you guys in the spring for their final report, as they do annually.
All right. Item C, bilingual exceptions and ESL waiver report.
Trustees, you'll see a report in your packet on page twenty and twenty-one. This is a report that we submit annually. Teachers who teach, who serve ESL students, as well as teachers who teach bilingual students, are allowed, depending on whether they are still pursuing either the ESL endorsement or bilingual certification, to be granted a waiver for one year to complete those requirements for certification or to complete the ESL endorsement. The difference between previous years and this year is that TEA added an additional requirement that the superintendent must provide a formal report to the board prior to submitting the waiver request to TEA. So that's what we're doing here today. In the report, you'll find that there's one bilingual exception. It's a teacher, who is a certified teacher at Heritage, who's actually co-teaching with another teacher who is bilingual, neither of which are bilingual certified, however. So the, the teacher of record is working on certification, and will obtain that throughout the year, and with this waiver, will be in compliance with requirements for teaching that course. The teacher who taught that course last year moved on, and as you, as you were very well aware, those with ESL endorsements and those with the bilingual certification are in high demand, very difficult to find, and so it is not uncommon for, for us annually, as well as districts across the state, to hire teachers who are completing that process and have a one-year waiver to meet certification requirements. Additionally, on the plan, or on the report that I provided for, you'll see sixteen teachers throughout the district listed. Those teachers are also listed by campus assignment, by name, and by the number of students that they serve who are ESL. So other student population, in some cases, they may have one student who is ESL, in other cases, a higher percentage of the students that are assigned to them that, that are ESL and require that service. But nonetheless, they need the endorsement. And so previous to this year, those teachers all just needed to be PSYOP trained, which our teachers are annually, who serve this population of students, and they'll continue to be PSYOP trained. That's a, a, a system for supporting language development, but they are now additionally required to have the ESL endorsement, and that's a new requirement for this year. So all of our middle school English Language Arts reading, reading teachers, in addition to being PSYOP trained... So all of our middle school English Language Arts reading teachers, in addition to being PSYOP trained, as they always have been in the past, they need to obtain the ESL endorsement. So they will be working to prepare this year and will be taking the endorsement exam by the end of the year. And they have one year to do that. And so the report that I'm providing you today is for your information so that I can subsequently then submit the waiver request. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions? All right. Item D, construction update.
All right. Like to call Mr. Selby to the podium at this time. You were about to have to start singing.
That would've been sad for all of us. Wow. All right. Once again, I'm very honored to be able to bring you another stimulating update to the two thousand sixteen Bond Construction Project. And we have, at Tradition Elementary, of course, it's been completed. We're in the process of completing punch list items. We're getting closer to the end of that process. Still refining some things that need to be completed, quite honestly, on the project, but once again, we're getting closer on all of those. At the Performing Arts Center, construction, I didn't change that, did I? So much for cut and paste. Go on past that one. But right now, we're still, uh, working towards getting a CFO for the Performing Arts Center itself. We are planning to start looking at doing punch list items on that by next week. We have given Guido the deadline of finishing by October the twenty-fifth. And we will see how that works.
What are they gonna plant in front of the center where all that dirt is right now? Are they gonna, I saw some greenery, but not much.
The very front is a paved, a grass paved area that's designed for a far lane. And the slope portion, they're gonna have different types of plants planted in there that were, the plan is for those to grow and spread and cover that area. And it'll establish root systems that'll support the soil in that area as well. They are having to revise some things that they didn't do quite right to make sure that we don't have soil erosion in that area. And so that's an ongoing project.
Put some landscape mesh or netting or something in there as well?
They have, they're going to have to put some, a mesh down in there. And that combined with the type of plants that they will be putting in there should, over time, provide the coverage that's needed. But that's the plan. Anything else, Jim? Salado, this is the projects that we have going in with the additions and renovations. These are the projects that are being overseen by Joris Construction. Salado in Wing A is the, actually Phase Three, Four Salado's projects. And it's, you can see on the left, can you get my fancy pointer here? The, on the left, we have new windows and new siding on the exterior. This is the progress being made on the classrooms in that Wing A as well. They're making good progress on that. And once again, I think it's gonna be a beautiful facility once they complete that part of it. They've already completed Phase One and Two. They're working on Phase Three. The plan is to be done by Christmas. We'll make the move into Phase Three out of the area, which is going to be Phase Four, which is the Wing B primarily. And that'll be going forward with completion of Phase Four by May and Phase Five, which is the remaining portion of the cafeteria, admin, and any other areas over there that they'll complete by August of this, of this school year, or two thousand nineteen. Harmony Elementary School, we have, once again, Phase Three. This, these are the classrooms on the east side of Harmony Elementary School. And on the left is a typical classroom and fairly good ways along than that. Took a photograph of this because these guys are polishing the concrete. And I thought that would be a fascinating photo for you to see how they polish the concrete. Harmony, once again, they've completed Phase One and Two. The original schedule was to complete by Christmas. They believe they can do it by Thanksgiving and I'm optimistic they can. If that's the case, then we'll start into Phase Four in December through May and finish up the final projects of Phase Five in the summer of two thousand nineteen. Pecan Valley, they are quite a ways along. This is hallway and typical classroom in Phase Three, which is, you're familiar with that campus, is the southwest corner of the campus, over closest module, closest to the gymnasium back there. They're very close to being completed right now. They'll definitely be done by Thanksgiving and will be moving in and out of there over Thanksgiving. And so from December through May, they'll do Phase Four, which will be the remainder of the west side of that campus. And then Phase Five will complete the remaining portions of what needs to be done at Pecan Valley over the summer. Sinclair Elementary, they also are very well along. This is a typical classroom. They just got through polishing the concrete there, hallway. Some of the other areas aren't quite that far along, but they also are looking forward to completing that project by Thanksgiving, although they were scheduled to be completed by Christmas. They'll go on to Phase Four in December through May and finish up the project this next summer. So once again, Joris is doing an excellent job of moving forward, getting the work done. John Glenn Annex will be bringing you a package for your consideration this evening on this. We've completed the construction documents. It's been submitted to the community for bids and will be bringing you the guaranteed maximum price on that project tonight. It'll be actually on the eighteenth of October, not nineteenth. And if you recall, last month, you approved a change order to that contract allowing Joris to do the work there. They should be completed, actually, I think their plan is to complete it before June, but they'll have until June to get that completed. And this project is being paid for out of our fund balance. East Central Development Center, we're still in just the design phase of that and that'll be, concepts on that will be brought to you at a later date. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on the bond program.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Selby? Great photography. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
And you have someone with you from Joris tonight, is that right? Would you mind introducing him to us? Okay, that's fine. We can wait. We'll wait. Just kidding. We'll do it on your schedule, not mine. All right. Upcoming events?
October-November calendar. Trustees, you'll see that early voting begins here in the boardroom on the twenty-second runs through the second of November. You'll also see that Election Day is on November sixth. Last month, we brought you information about polling sites. You'll also see that we have a Thanksgiving holiday. District will be closed the week of the nineteenth in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. We will also, I'm sorry, on the twenty-second of October, next Monday, we have a student holiday. It is quarterly planning for staff on the twenty-second. That's, well, with the exception of November third, I did want to point out that the reason that we really expressed to Guido Construction that we need that building turned over by the twenty-fifth is because we do have a TMEA Region Eleven Choir Concert. Actually, it's a choir contest at the Patterson on the third of November from four to seven. So it's the first official event and we actually agreed to host that event back in May. And so we're really eager and excited to showcase the facility and to host many, many school districts, many high schools from many school districts across the state at that event. And so it's really important that Guido gets that thing turned over to us prior to that.
What time are the early voting gonna be?
Linda?
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our action agenda. Item A, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, district targeted improvement plan.
Trustees, it's going to feel a little bit redundant, but it's subtly different. We last month shared some campus targeted improvement plans with you. We've since got some clarification from TEA that there's some additional district-level targeted improvement planning that needed to happen. And so I'd like for our Director of Accountability and School Transformation, Jonathan Holbert, to come on up and give us a little tour, a little overview of that. And again, I want to emphasize that Guido mentioned this last month, but it's all kind of unfolding as we fly the plane. And we're gonna definitely thrive regardless, so. Mr. Holbert?
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So last month, we talked about that accountability system and I mentioned how every year on August fifteenth, they begin to work on that system's plan. And so it creates some new challenges as they create the plan as the year unfolds. So for example, today, at about dismissal time, I got off the phone with Region Twenty. They had just completed some training this week and they have a new process that's due by November ninth that some of our campuses have to do for that process from last month. And so that's a good example of the extra burden that we're placing on some of our campuses from the state level that, now working with Nicole and Stephanie on those new burdens, they're upbeat and they're a joy to work with because they have such a great attitude and they always get things done. But that's just a quick example of what Mr. Toscano was referencing there. So today, what you see before you is a plan with three parts to it. The first part is really the overall district part. And what you'll notice is it's very similar to what the campuses we're working on. That was intentional. We aligned what the district's working on to what the campuses are working on so that we're doing district support for the campus work, so that we're working together and we're not adding a bunch of extra things to do, but we're working on similar things together. Now, there are two other parts to the plan. There's one about our English learners. So that's student service through bilingual and ESL programs. That's the second part of the plan. And you'll notice that it's, again, it mirrors the first part of the plan, but for those students. And the third part is for students receiving special education services. And again, it mirrors the first plan. And those two sections are really just in case TEA, they haven't published all of their accountability yet for last year. So we're still waiting on the Performance-Based Monitoring and Accountability System, the PBMAS report. So they still haven't published that last part and decided who has to make plans for what. So in the event that we have to create a plan for that, those are our plans for either bilingual, ESL, or special education. And so we wanted to be proactive and we wanted to make sure that we weren't waiting for them to say, oh, make a plan. We wanted to make the best plans for those populations and make sure that we were ready for any possible eventuality that could come from them. And so if there are any questions about the plans, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Looks like we're good?
Thank you.
I believe we're ready for your recommendations, sir.
Yeah. Apologize, I was engaged and enthralled in the plan, Jonathan. Sorry about that. Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen District Targeted Improvement Plan as presented.
All right. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the District Targeted Improvement Plan as presented. If there are no questions, the chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion by Ms. Brazil. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, reappointment of directors to East Central Foundation.
Trustees, we have two directors to consider for reappointment. The first of which is Mary Beth Fisk, who is the CEO and Executive Director of the Ecumenical Center for Education and Counseling, and Barry Stevens, who is retired Senior Vice President of Matera Paper. And the recommendation is to reappoint both to three-year terms as directors of the East Central School Foundation effective January first, two thousand nineteen.
Anyone have any questions about that? All right.
All right. Trustees, I recommend reappointment of Mary Beth Fisk and Barry Stevens to three-year terms as directors of the East Central School Foundation.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to reappoint Mary Beth Fisk and Barry Stevens as directors of the East Central Foundation. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions, comments? If y'all haven't had the opportunity to ascend to attend one of the foundation meetings, y'all ought to try and go sometime. Great group of people. They do magnificent work for the community and quite a few of them don't even live in the community. So they really, they really provide some service to us and we're very fortunate to have them. Carlos is one of those directors. Carlos, we appreciate your efforts on that as well. So we'll give you those kudos as a representative of the foundation here this evening. So again, we have a recommendation by the superintendent to reappoint Mary Beth Fisk and Barry Stevens as directors of the East Central Foundation. We have a motion by Mr. Feller and a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, proposals for abatement consulting services at East Central High School, John Glenn Annex, Pecan Valley Elementary School, and Sinclair Elementary School.
I believe that includes Salado as well. Am I correct, Jim? Okay. So we'll need to add Salado to that. It's required by the Texas Department of State Health Services. Consulting and oversight of asbestos abatement is required, as I previously mentioned. And that includes project management, pre-demolition inspections, sample analysis, air monitoring, as well as air clearances, along with the completion of all closeout documentation at all job sites. These services are going to exceed fifty thousand dollars and therefore need board approval. Asbestos consulting services are considered professional services. Therefore, the district will select a company based on qualifications as opposed to competitive bids. The district does, has done business in asbestos consulting with Bircham Environmental and believes that they provide a quality service. They are qualified at a good value. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
On the, the project management or the PCM air monitoring, we got overtime shifts at each of the schools?
Yes. The purpose of that is to try to get that done and not impact the schedule that we have for construction. And in order to get that done, they're gonna have some overtimes.
Okay. I mean, each one of the schools has significant overtime? Okay, I mean, each, each one of the schools has significant overtime?
And they only build what they actually end up using. These are actually quite often projected amounts. It's based on rates. And the, the big cost on some of this is actually the air monitoring. You'll notice that sometimes it's under that and sometimes it's a little bit over.
Yeah, 'cause there's eleven thousand dollars worth of overtime at, at Sinclair. So I just, only eight hours, eight shifts at regular time, and then ten shifts at overtime. So that, that was just my concern, was just, we're going overtime at each of the, each of the campuses. But there again, like you said, if it's just speculation is what they're gonna use?
What they do is, is they, this is what they predict they're gonna need. And it's based on how quickly the contractor actually does, they can determine how much of their time is needed. Typically, if they get in there, the contractor we're gonna be recommending in the next agenda items has done very good work for us. They tend to get in and do their work and get out pretty quickly. And so my anticipation is that we won't get that level of overtime, but it's possible, so don't hate not having it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I recommend Bircham Environmental Services to perform consulting services to oversee the abatement of asbestos building materials for additions and renovations at East Central High School, John Glenn Annex, Pecan Valley Elementary School, Sinclair Elementary School, and Salado Intermediate School, is described in the attached proposal.
Thank you. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the proposal presented for abatement consulting services. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item D, proposals for asbestos abatement at East Central High School, John Glenn Annex, Pecan Valley.
Won't need Salado on that one.
Okay.
No, won't need Salado on that. Sir, the tru, the district received three proposals on October sixteenth. The lowest of which was submitted was from Sisk Robb for a total of two hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred dollars. The district's worked with Sisk Robb on several abatement projects, and they have delivered quality work at a good value and in a timely fashion. Tabulation, I believe, is included in your miscellaneous packet for your review of those three proposals that we did receive. Mr. Sel would be happy to answer any questions about those that we received, if you have any.
Anyone have any questions about asbestos abatement as opposed to asbestos abatement consulting?
Well, the first one does the monitoring, the inspections, the oversight, the project manage, management, and then the abatement is the actual work. So it's a requirement that you have that oversight of that actual process.
Correct. All right. I think we're ready for your recommendation.
Trustees, I recommend board approval for Sisk Robb Incorporated to perform asbestos abatement projects at East Central High School, John Glenn Annex, Pecan Valley Elementary School, and Sinclair Elementary School.
All right, we have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the proposal as presented for asbestos abatement. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, discussion and possible action of construction manager at risk amendment number three, East Central High School, John Glenn Annex renovations.
Yes, sir. Trustees, as Mr. Selby mentioned earlier, last month, the board approved an amendment to the CM at risk contract to include Joris General Contractors expanding their scope of work to complete the John Glenn renovations. As a result, Joris is responsible for submitting requests for proposals for each package of work that would be performed at the John Glenn Annex. Those proposals were received on October tenth. As the construction manager at risk, Joris contractors are required to, to take those proposals and working together with the district to, to assess those and determine the best value. And then as a result of doing that value engineering, as you, if you will, and reviewing that scope of work and subsequent cost, the responsibility of, of the general contractor then is to submit a guaranteed maximum price. Just so that you're familiar with, reminded of what that means. It means that that is the, what will be presented tonight is, as it's stated, the guaranteed maximum price. If for some reason the cost were to exceed that, the general contractor's responsible for those costs. If the cost comes in less than that, when the project's done, the district would benefit from those savings. And so this time, I'd like for Mr. Selby to come on up and give us a quick overview of that scope of work and what's included in the GMP.
Yes, Mr. Toscano, board members, we have two very distinguished gentlemen here tonight with us. We have Carlos Costatino, who's the man from LPA, and then Justin Bendelei from Joris General Contractors.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
They have to teach them a parade wave, Jim.
Yeah, I know. It's a, it's a skill. Is Mr. Pat, excuse me?
I'm honored. I'm honored, sir.
That come out of the time capsule there?
You know?
I won't take it personal, Mr. Morgan.
A mind is a terrible thing to waste. That's all I can say.
Sometimes families are dysfunctional.
I apologize. Toscano, that under the, the construction manager at risk, you have the construction manager, in this case, it's Joris General Contractors. And through that change order that you approved last month, it allowed them to go out and seek proposals from various subcontractors. And based on the scope of work that is described for you in your attachment, that kind of gets, is summarized in there. If you look at the page three and four, it will kind of go over the various areas or the, the different categories in which there were pricing requested and received. And the, the, the overall scope of the work is going to go in, and we're gonna, if you are, think of John Glenn's current campus. The northern two most modules or, or wings are dating back to the fifties, early fifties. And they weren't cost-effective to renovate. And so part of that project cost is to demolish those, those two buildings. There'll be some site work that, and landscaping that'll take place in that area, so it looks good and drains properly. And in addition to that, we're gonna have an additional parking lot to the, just to the northeast of those, where those old facilities were. And that'll be large enough for overflow parking for events at the Performing Arts Center, as well as at the stadium for other events that might take place in the high school campus. It'll also be large enough for the band to practice on as well, if we choose to use it in that way, which I think we will. And so that'll be a major part of that. The old gymnasium there is going to be renovated into a general shop class that will be used for a variety of, of shop activities. It'll be, it's designed so it has the flexibility to be able to be adaptable for various types of, types of programs that deal with, in need of shop. In addition to that, you'll have the existing campus, some painting that will take place in the, in the classrooms that are in the older wings of the, of the nineteen sixty area. And then you have the new addition that's out towards the south of the campus, which will have very limited renovation because it's in very good shape. The major cost in those areas, though, are gonna be the, the renovation of the restrooms to bring them up to a current ADA standard, as well as just to improve the, the facilities that are aged and need, need to be renovated. There's going to be additional technology, so that you have overhead projectors and, and screens and so forth that will be in line with what's at the rest of the high school campus facilities. And so those are kind of the highlight of the major portions of that project that, that'll be taking place. I'll be glad to go into more detail or answer any questions you have on that scope. In an effort to try to bring about the most cost effectiveness for this project, we did work with Joris to try to identify the best ways to reduce costs, but at the same time, provide the, what's needed for that campus to be used at a high school setting and for students to be successful. Like I said, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
And we also had to make the decision to replace the fire alarm system.
Yes, thank you. A major, a good chunk of that cost is the fire alarm. The fire alarm system, we've been nursing along, actually for the last, at least five years. Especially the last year that John Glenn was in there, had multiple issues with false alarms and, and ongoing issues. It wasn't just the last year, but especially the last year was a problem. And it was, it's just kind of historic, unfortunately. But it's just, the original alarm system dates back to the eighties, quite honestly. And just is, it's getting harder and harder even to get the parts for it, and when we do, they're extremely expensive, and it's just worn out. It, it goes off, even now, nobody's in there, and it just goes off. We have to go in and constantly go in and try to keep it from just not crashing. So it needs to be replaced.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Jim, on the, on the subtotals with, or the, under the category there, you got alternate one B sectional doors are deducting that. And it says over, overhead doors, so we're gonna be putting in overhead doors?
Yes, we have overhead doors in there, but they're old. They are in poor condition. Also, the springs and other parts of that don't work properly anymore, so that whenever you are trying to raise or lower them, if for some reason the chain slipped out of your hand, it would literally come down, and if somebody's foot or body was there, it would smack it pretty good and hurt. It would be dangerous for people.
So are they still gonna be chain operated, or are they gonna be?
No, they're still gonna be chain operated, but these will be on a slide system that would be, have the springs that would work and would have some resistance once they're going down. They, they will not be motorized.
Okay.
The original, the reason there's a credit, the original proposal had them a coil system, which is more expensive. This would go to more of a steel panel. That's the more traditional looking garage door type.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. Mr. Mendelei, just thank you for your quality work and coming in on time and on budget. It is great. I appreciate it. I pass by Salado every morning and just am in awe of the work.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Appreciate the visit.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, I think we're ready for your recommendation, sir.
Trustees, I recommend board approval of, of the GMP three proposed by Joris General Contractors in the amount of three point, three million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, as presented.
Thank you. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the construction manager at risk proposal from Joris. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Massengill. Is there a second? We have a second by Ms. Berrientos. Any other questions or comments? You have something else?
Sir, I had to speak to Jim after the meeting. I got caught.
All right. So we have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the construction manager at risk proposal as presented. We have a motion by Mr. Massengill and a second by Ms. Berrientos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Does any board member wish to have a consent item pulled from the consent agenda? If not, chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. Now, before we move to adjournment, you have anything else for us, sir?
I do. I just want to add a, a thank you to both LPA and Joris General Contractors. It's, it's a daunting task to do renovations while schools are in session, and the reports that I get from campus leadership and campus staff is that it's very professional, clear communication, what you say is what you do. And I think it's showing up in the end, that there's been total team effort and a high degree of professionalism. Because it looked like, if I recall, most of those are coming in around Thanksgiving, when they were intended to be coming in around Christmas. And I recall, Thanksgiving is before Christmas, which means they're being completed early. And that's very much appreciated by myself and our staff, so thank you very much.
It is. So that will keep us from having to go through what we did moving into heritage, into tradition. And speaking of that, for all of you that did such excellent work on that. I know that that was quite a Herculean effort to get in there in less than a week's time. Lots of folks chipped in. We really appreciate that. But I think the most important thing about that was that the kids didn't see any disruption at all. That they saw none of that. They came to school the first day, and y'all were ready for them. So Ms. Gorm, your staff, all of the staff that helped with those things volunteered your time and were over there. Just excellent work, so we appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you all very much. And we'll look forward to Elise, Elise's move in to the renovations.
Yes, sir.
All right. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have multiple, multiple motions. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you very much, everyone.